Welcome everybody to the September 28, 2020 meeting of Van Worf City Council. We'll begin with an invocation by Pastor Pete Solar followed by the pledge of allegiance, if everybody would be surprised.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful to come before you this evening in the name of our Lord Jesus. We have a lightness and joy in our spirits tonight, Father. We thank you for the privilege to meet together to take care of the city's business. But thankful also, Father, for the call to public ministry that you've given each of the members of the administration and the city council. We're thankful, Father, for also the members of the public who are here. And we pray this evening again that your spirit would guide with wisdom and understanding and compassion and fairness as each detail is taken care of. Father, we know that you see and hear and know everything. Father, we trust your guidance in each matter brought before us tonight. We thank you for the Lord Jesus, our Savior, in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Drew, please call the roll. Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Callis?
Here.
Mr. Penning?
Here.
Mr. Egler?
Here.
Mrs. Murgy? Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Murgy notified me that she was unable to attend this evening, so I need a motion to approve her absence by Mr. Egler, second by Mr. Coleman. Please call the roll. Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right, everybody should have the agenda for this evening's meeting in front of you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, will I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Davis, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Callis. Please call the roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
All right, also, before this evening's meeting, everybody was provided minutes to our last meeting dated September 14, 2020. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none?
Moved to accept.
Moved to accept, Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Callis. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
All right, comments, communications, petitions, home guard building update, Stacy Adams.
Thanks very much, Mr. President. Certainly appreciate it. We have had questions directly. There has been comments on social media, so we just wanted to make an effort to try and get as much information and update out as much as we could. If I go back, the home guard building was privately owned and had been deteriorating for 25 years. There was no contamination on the property. And frankly, I'm not speaking for the council, but if I had been in your shoes, there is some risk with that unknown, that you have a contaminated building, you don't necessarily know how much it costs to take down, or what the remediation is going to be. So folks were reluctant to take possession of the building. The land bank, Van Worf County Land Rehabilitation Corporation, or I'm going to call it Land Bank for this discussion, and the Van Worf County Foundation actually worked together to find a building solution. In December of 2019, the Land Bank acquired the property through the foreclosure process. And then, for the first several months of 2020, the foundation completed many assessments on the building. It really resulted in an estimate to renovate the building of about $15 million. When it was determined that the restoration wasn't feasible, the Land Bank and the foundation began to work on an EPA brownfield multipurpose grant that would have funded that demolition. On September 13, a partial collapse of the building happened, and the remainder of the building remained unstable and was an immediate threat to public safety. On September 14, this council passed a resolution declaring the property an imminent threat to residents. On December 16, the Van Worf City Fire Chief actually issued an order to stabilize or demolish the building within a 60-day period. So just to share what actions we took after that collapse. The street department closed the street. Fencing was ordered. Just so everyone knows, the intent of the fencing was not to prevent more of the building to collapse, but it was really to keep people away from the building. So keep foot traffic and parking away from the building. We discussed with the AEP representative, we called every adjoining property owner, and they are out of their buildings and will continue to remain out of those buildings anywhere that there is any risk, at least until the building comes down. The downside of the EPA grant that the foundation and the land bank had started working on is the grant deadline was the end of October. The money actually then, the award didn't happen until May of 2021, and those funds actually wouldn't have become available until about a year from now. The estimate for the demolition is $402,000. So this is where the challenge is. So we've had comments like, why don't you do something? You're twiddling your thumbs. Why don't you just take it down? The land bank doesn't have $402,000 to take that building down. So we have been looking at every conceivable option that we have to fund the demolition. We've discussed with Representative Riedel, Senator McCauley, we have called Congressman Latta's office, he called Washington, D.C. They've looked at the Congressional Research Department, looking for funding opportunities to take that building down. We ultimately identified a target of opportunity grant through Ohio Development Services, which would cover 50% of the demolition cost. We held the call. We got a resolution from the commissioners that allowed us to apply for the grant. We did a pre-application within 24 hours, and we did a full formal application within 48 hours. And so we are working as quickly as we possibly can. We identified five qualified contractors. We submitted to the state historic preservation office. They have to give approval for us to take the building down. That process typically takes 60 days. We asked for an emergency. They said they would give us a determination in seven days. We also contacted the EPA. The EPA, for a demolition, has a mandatory waiting period of 14 days. We also asked for them to expedite that process, and they have agreed to a one-day waiting period. Development Services, I would tell you, they are doing a fabulous job supporting this, and they have really expedited their process. They took that application, and it was presented this morning for agency review. So I know that we had talked about going through the city at one point. Because they actually had agency review today, we would have lost another week. So because we couldn't, weren't able to meet on Thursday, we went ahead and filed on behalf of Van Worf County.
Stacy?
Yes, sir.
That right there is the reason that the preliminary 052 is not going to be discussed and is no longer needed by us, because the county is the signing agent now for that.
Thank you. But I would tell you, I appreciate the willingness to attempt to meet. That didn't work out. We needed to continue to move, and so we are trying to be as flexible as we can, but also to try and get that building down as quickly as we possibly can. We also have investigated further stabilization of the building. It has been determined that probably the best thing we can do is to focus on getting the building down as quickly as possible. That we've considered scaffolding potentially, and it's like, well, we're going to pray for no severe wind.
That's a house of cards.
Or much rain, and we'll get it down as quickly as we can. If we are awarded the Target of Opportunity Grant, again, that would qualify for up to $200,000 worth of funds towards the demo. It can exceed 50%, so it really would be $200,000 that we would be looking for from that Target of Opportunity Grant. The revolving loan fund board had an emergency meeting. We had some guidance that we would may be able to use revolving loan funds for, as a grant for this demolition for community safety issues. That board met, and they have approved $100,000 from the revolving loan fund to be used for the demolition. And then, the Van Worf County Foundation, also on an emergency basis, they have approved a grant of $102,000 that would cover current estimate for demolition and cleanup on the home guard building. We have done all that we can to expedite the process, but I just want to talk to you about what happens. So they presented it in front of the agency today. We are hoping that we'll get approval by the end of the week. They have to do a release of funds. We have got to do an environmental review, which is, all of this, we have been working in advance before they even told us they needed things. But that's, we will submit that, and we're probably at October 10 before we can even post-publish for a bid. We have to publish in the newspaper for the bid. We have to mandatory wait seven days after that. We have to publish a second time in the newspaper and wait a week after that. So I just wanted to share that even expediting and working as quickly as we possibly can, we're looking at probably the end of a month, a month from now, four weeks before any demolition can begin. Market Street is going to remain closed until the building is down. The barrier fence is going to remain in place, and we would continue to ask residents to stay away from the building, and they have done a good job of that so far. We just want to make sure that everyone stays safe. I just wanted to remind folks that the foundation or the land bank didn't cause the deterioration of that building, that I really appreciate the efforts of both, and certainly the financial commitment from the foundation, because without that, we probably would be very far away from a solution for that building if it were still privately held. I want to thank the council, commissioners, the fire chief, street department, revolving loan fund board, and the foundation board for working expeditiously together toward a solution. I wanted to open it up for any questions that I might answer.
Seth, did you want to?
I do want to add.
Do you want to add?
Yep. Stacy and her team, especially Krista Summers, have just been putting hours of work into this project. I've probably talked to Stacy and Krista maybe more in the last two weeks, and I even have my own life, so.
She might like that.
So I want to make sure that they're publicly gratified for that work.
Thank you. Questions about the demo, the timing?
Questions from council? Bill?
I guess my question is, is the abatement process different than the destruction process or demolition?
Now, actually, because of the condition of the building, we will not be able to do a traditional abatement, where they go in, take the contaminated materials, and take it out. So because they can go in, the entire building debris, et cetera, will be treated as hot, so will be treated as it is contaminated. The demolition will be a wet demolition, so as they would be taking the building down, they would spray that, hose it down with water as they go. And really, the only thing they're attempting to do there is to keep the dust down, so it does not go into the air. And then they would take all of the debris from the building to a site that would accept this dust as material.
Do they have to, how far do they have to dig down? Like, there's, I'm assuming there's a basement?
There is a basement.
They have to go below the basement, or just to that level?
They will take the basement.
No, I know, but do they have to go below the basement?
No, there is also perk contamination there as well.
Perk?
We have not determined what remediation will be required. It depends on the end use for the property. It could be as simple as filling it with stone, and as long as it has air, there's no other, nothing else needs to happen. If there is a building intended to be built back onto that site, then we would have to put a vapor barrier down.
The only reason you have to ask is I remember when we've had gas leaks and stuff, and depending upon what it is, there's certain cleanup processes that you have to go through.
Yeah, so really...
We don't know yet what...
We don't know yet. That will be part of the bid process. Just to give you an idea, we just got a sample bid packet that we will have to have ready. We've got probably eight business days now to get that ready. It's 298 pages, just to give you an idea.
Better you than me. Any other questions from council? Jeff?
Yeah. The, oh, let me see what it says here. The EPA brownfield grants out of the picture then. I mean, you can't, we can't apply for that and wait, and then awarded a year from now and get the money and repay.
I won't say never. So here's what I would tell you. If, we haven't been awarded the Target of Opportunity Grant, so if they would come back and, let's say, not award anything, then we would take probably the 200 between the RLF and the foundation, and we'd at least take the building down to remove the risk. But we'd still have, then we may use that brownfield grant if we don't get the other one. That's the only way. I will say...
I think we are still, we're still evaluating that internally from the foundation.
For a different purpose. Fair?
And for backup as well, so yeah.
It's better to apply and be told no than...
There is also, that's a national process, and they award 10 awards nationally each year, so it's a long shot.
Yes.
That's what they use to clean up, like, nuclear waste type things, brownfield grants. Any other questions from council before I open it up to the public?
Yeah, I've got a quick one. I know when, I know the bid process is pretty much set in stone as to how that process goes. If timing becomes an issue, is there any steps to expedite that process, or if all the bids say we're not going to be able to get started until the end of November?
Actually, so here's what we will likely do. We will likely put an end date. So I would tell you, my objective today is to abide by the fire chief's demand that we have that cleaned up in 60 days. So we're going to put in the bid process that must be completed by this date. I don't really care if they start on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Sunday, but I have to have it done by this date. So we will include that as a requirement for the bid process.
Any other council questions? Mr. Jared, you raised your hand, you have a question?
I have a comment on the chain link fence. I don't think a lot of people know, saw exactly the extent of the falling brick, but, I mean, it covers the lane.
Yes.
So, I mean, there should also be signs to say, you know, they're very bold, saying, you know, how many feet you should stay at least from the building.
I think the fire department has posted on the building. We could put something on phones, apparently.
I suppose we could, yeah.
And, I mean, other than that, as far as the timing of the demolition, I think you'll be lucky to get it done within the two months, but what the, what affirmative defense would be, you're making good faith effort. So, I mean, you can try, I just don't see it happening in a week.
I think we have shortened everything we possibly can.
It's being realistic.
And I think we'll see what happens, and then we'll have to go back and see the fire chief, and we'll have that conversation if we need to.
So the, so the moral of this is that when in Van Worf, there's misinformation on social media about a very important topic related to Van Worf, right? So social media might not be the best avenue to get your news about things that are going on in Van Worf. Yeah, we have, we have paid reporters. That might be the better route, and asking people that are actually involved in the process. Anything else, Stacy?
No, sir.
All right. I do have one comment, communication, petition that came to me, and Jay, I'm just going to read this, dated today. This is to me as president of the council from the Planning Commission. The Van Worf Planning Commission held a public hearing on Monday, September 28, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. to review the final plot for the Elks Drive extension requested by Alexander and Beevout Development Incorporated. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the final plot as presented. Now, just to fill that in, the final plot is what's going ultimately to give us access or give access to the airport.
Correct.
Terminal.
Correct.
So that's just, just information.
Well, and can I?
Yeah.
The follow-up to that is then, once, once council approves that, it's really just a, you're approving the street and the dedication of that right away, and then they'll record that at the courthouse, then they'll in turn ask us to take over the utilities, because they've constructed the city standards, and council would approve it. You take over the water sewer, curb gutter, storm system.
So do we have to then?
We have to approve the plat.
So I need a motion?
Well, we...
We don't have the plat, I don't have the plat, so can it wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, we can have it prepared for the next meeting.
Okay, all right. All I have is the letter, I don't have the actual...
Yeah, I'll get it to John, we'll get the, he can have the ordinance prepared.
All right. Okay. Any other comments, communications, petitions to come before council from council? From Stacy?
No.
Oh, from the public. Mr. Jared?
You made a comment toward social media. Was it referencing the building?
I think it's referencing, you can, you can interpret my comment as you see fit, Mr. Jared.
Well, I'm asking you to clarify what you're talking about, the social media and the building, or what?
Uh, well, that's part of it. There are other, in my opinion, and I am a member of city, city council, obviously I'm city council president, but I'm also a member of the city of Van Worf, so I am allowed to express my opinions also. Pretty much anytime something of import comes up in Van Worf, there is a significant amount of misinformation provided and read and believed by individuals when they look at social media. And my argument is, if you have questions, visit the actual source of the information and ask the people that are actually involved, not listen to... I'll stop there. Moving on. Any, any comments, communications, petitions to come before council this evening? Okay. Administrative reports, mayor, Mr. Ken Markford.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we continue to try to get word out about the upcoming election, we were able to put the water bills out a little bit earlier than typical. Usually, they try to have those put in the mail so that people receive them about the first of the month. And since early voting starts October 6, we've tried to get that in a little sooner so that we can include the informational flyer that we had. If you've gotten your bill, it probably came out looking like this on one side and had to schedule on the other. A couple of things I wanted to mention about that. We were very careful to make this an informational flyer and not a piece of campaign literature. Nowhere on here does it suggest how you should vote, and nowhere on here does it even ask you to vote. It merely informs you that there is an election and that there is going to be a question about whether a charter commission should be formed. And then there's a list of our public information meetings. As a result of that, I was able to talk to four people that came in today that said they found out about it through this flyer. Since it was a single piece of paper, there was no additional postage charge. The company that works with us to send out the water bills charges for the paper and processing, so for approximately seven and a half cents per bill, we were able to add this. I think that's a pretty good use of money to try to get the information out to every resident. And then, the other thing I have is, trigger treat will be Saturday, October 31, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That follows the way we've been doing it, and as people are choosing whether or not to participate, we would ask them to do it the same way we have the past many years, is if you want to participate, put your porch light on. If you don't, don't put your porch light on to help people to know whether or not they should stop at your house. And so, that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Any questions for the mayor from council? From the public? Mr. Jared?
The way you described it, is that your argument for why there wasn't a standard disclaimer in that paper? And no, like, campaign sign you would have?
Well, it's not a campaign. We're allowed to educate.
Like, paid for by?
Yeah.
You could say that would be a reason why there was no disclaimer. There was no reason to.
Your former election coordinator had that question, why there wasn't a standard disclaimer?
Well, the reason is it's...
She asked you that?
Yeah, me commenting with, I was...
Oh.
So it's convenient.
Well, I'll answer your question.
Well, but in line, in line with what you said earlier, that would have been a good time for a person to call here and ask, because I don't see everything that's posted.
Well, I noticed you were paying special care not to push it to vote one way or the other, or do you even vote? But, boy, I thought maybe that might have been an argument.
The same thing, I would say, if you went to what I'm calling the FAQs on our website. Personally, I would have loved to put more in there. Personally, I would have loved to put more in there to basically say, this is a good idea, you should vote yes. But I can't do that. And so, in my opinion, it's a very boring listing of facts. Well, informative listing of facts, how is that? And, uh, as an example, uh, one of the things that's in there mentions that there are over 250 places in Ohio that have a charter. Straight fact. What I would have liked to have put on there was my opinion, if charters were such a bad idea, don't you think there'd be more places either getting rid of their charter or something to that effect? But see, now that's my opinion. And that would be steering a person towards a conclusion. And that's what I'm having to avoid.
All right. Safety Service Director, Mr. Jay Fleming.
Uh, the only thing I had to report is this, this project is moving along and we hope to have heat by the end of October, but, um, they are starting to hook some, tie some things up on the first floor, then they'll move back up here, so, um, it's just a lot of little detail and wiring and plumbing lines that get ran all throughout the building. So, but we're anxious to have control because we do not have air conditioning or heating as of this day, so we're hoping for mild October.
It's not real mild in here right now.
There's warm, warm. In between a warm. And paving and washing street should wrap up by the end of the week. So, that's all I had to report.
Any questions for the Safety Service Director from council? From the public? Thank you, Jay. Uh, Auditor, Mrs. Martha Dalliot.
I have no report.
Any questions for the auditor? Uh, I was informed that, uh, the law director is, was not going to be here, obviously. Uh, if you have any questions for the auditor, please, uh, submit them to me or members of administration. Committee reports, Health, Service, and Safety, Mr. Bill Marshall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, short report tonight, only, uh, six code violations since the last, uh, report that I gave. Uh, we're cleaning up some of the open ones from previous weeks that, uh, have come to fruition. And, uh, the only thing that jumped off of the sheet, uh, tonight with me was, I see where we, uh, had a code violation for feeding cats. Just what we want to hear. I thought we, we're past that, but, uh, I guess what I would say to the public is, it's fine to feed your own cats, but please don't feed the community cats. Uh, you can't have bulls out and feed hundreds of cats, and that's what this particular situation is.
Yes.
With that, that's all I have to report.
Okay. Any questions for, uh, Health, Service, and Safety? Mr. Egler.
Uh, Bill, did you figure out, or did, are you privy to, Bill said that, or John said that there was some course going to be taken for, um, the house on Vine Street that would not answer your door?
We're still-
So, I mean, there's going to be a different process that he was going to take because across the street from me, they're privy to that now.
Right.
Because they, they was down tonight, knocked on their door, look out there and see it, and not going to answer the doors that they're figuring.
Yep.
You know, the same thing, so there's going to be a different?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I have a meeting scheduled with the law director for, I believe it's Friday this week on that, as well as a couple of other matters that are, uh, priority here in the city. And yes, we are very aware and there will be action taken.
Hmm, interesting.
That's it.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's interesting. When I have to, uh, remove a student from university, I don't have to get their permission to serve them with a letter, I just send them a letter and assume that it gets there. Even if they choose not to open it, it's still, uh, it still works. All right. Economic Development, Mr. Jeff Callis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have, uh, one thing, I need to, um, I need to make a motion for the law director to prepare a resolution for, um, authorizing the service director to sign a memorandum of understanding with a local business on an emergency.
On an emergency basis. This, uh, just for everybody, this is the meeting that we had at 6:15. So I have a motion to prepare a resolution on an emergency basis. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Egler. Any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yeah.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure everybody's aware and, and the, the public is aware, uh, we should have all the paperwork ready, uh, along with this ordinance at our next meeting. And at that point, assuming all the paperwork is in hand, we'll be able to announce that, uh, local business and approve the actual physical location.
And then we'll run that through the next meeting.
Yes, we will run that all the way through the next meeting. Any questions for Economic Development? Is that it, all? All right. Thank you, Jeff. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Joel Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation has no report tonight.
Any questions for Parks and Recreation? Thank you, Joel. Uh, Finance, Mr. Jeff Egler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance has no report this evening.
Any questions for Finance? Hearing none, thanks, Jeff. I don't remember who is the backup for judiciary and annexation.
That would be myself.
It'd be you. Do you have a report?
I do not, Mr. President.
All right. Any questions for judiciary can be forwarded to myself or Mr. Callis. Streets and alleys, Mr. Steve Helman.
I have nothing to report either.
Okay. Any questions for streets? Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yes.
I would ask to bring up Mendon Road, is, is any of Mendon Road city limits?
Only the piece by Blue Rock on behalf of it.
Well, because they're asking for a speed limit, they're, they're, the speed limit, they're, the thing is just too excessive, they're running 55.
Where?
On Mendon Road coming home.
Between, that isn't speed limit, I mean that's-
Near the Baptist church.
Yeah. On Mendon Road, you know, there's, there's like that, when you come off of, what is it?
Monte Carlo.
Monte Carlo, there's like four houses there and four, probably four on this side, and it, them residents just feel it's too fast, can we get it down to, are we allowed to get that down to four, at least 45?
That's between the church and the radio station, right? That's what they're talking about?
Or the railroad track, yeah.
Yeah, railroad tracks. Off of the tracks. We'd have to do a joint with the county. We, we only control half of it for that, that 1,000 feet.
Can, can we, can we make that added?
Uh, I'd have to look into it. I can, I can tell you a lot of those speed limits are driven by the road condition and the number of driveways and it's, it's 55 because that's what it warrants. It's similar to going out of town when it used to be, you know, it's 50 there by the water plant. We got, we did get that reduced, but we can look into it.
Yeah, it's, because it's, like, it's 45 going clear out 118 on them houses, it's 45 going 127 in them houses.
Yeah.
And that used to be, I mean, I don't know.
But that took, that took effort and time and-
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the county engineer, he'd be, that'd be better start tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Thank you, Mr. Trauman. Property Equipment, Mr. Davis.
Uh, the only thing that I have tonight, uh, I just want to make, more or less make the public aware, we've started, uh, the Facebook page, the Charter Information Facebook page, where we're listing charter facts. We're going to host some Facebook Live events coming up, starting this Thursday at 7:00 PM will be the first one. We'll have members of council here, meeting, um, the Facebook Live, what we're hoping to do and what I've set up so far, we're taking questions now. So if the, if the public has questions, they can submit them through that Facebook page and we're going to set up, um, the, the council members that'll be here or the folks that'll be here to answer questions, um, we're going to try to do the pre-prepared thing. So if we have the questions ahead of time, we'll have answers for them. We may do a little, um, you know, if somebody sends a comment in and we can answer another question, we'll try to do that as well. But we're going to try to do everything pre-prepared if we can. It just, you know, it makes sure that what, the information that we're putting out is factual and we have everything lined up, it allows us to make sure everything's, um, sound on that end. But for council, I do have kind of a sign up sheet here just to, to make sure that we've got representation on each of these Thursdays, um, that way we've got people here to answer questions.
And how will everybody know where to go?
Um, the Facebook, the Facebook page is out there, it's Van Werke Charter Information is the page. It's been, it's been shared multiple times, I shared it with, uh, with a couple of other large Facebook pages today and they put it out for us too, so.
Thank you.
It's out there in front of a lot of people. So I'm hoping that with that, we start to turn in some more questions, um, and if you guys are able to help too, that'd be great.
I just wanted to make sure they add it and that the-
Yeah.
People that are listening or watching tomorrow.
Yeah. Van Werke Charter Information is the page, um, and, you know, any, any questions about that subject can be sent to any of us. I mean, we'll get you answers. We will do whatever we've got to do to get you the information you're requesting. That's, uh, that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for, I guess, property and equipment?
Property and equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Unfinished business, uh, we talked about both of these, uh, code enforcement, just had a, um, information about charter government, uh, any new business to come before council this evening? We have no ordinances on the consent agenda, but we do have one ordinance, uh, 20-09-046. At the last meeting, after we introduced and read it, a, a conversation, uh, ensued and we, the request was that we amend this ordinance, the language to eliminate the language that makes it sound like we're actually going to paint a crosswalk. So, um, I need, uh, Mr. Hellman to ask for the ordinance 046 to be amended to eliminate that, then we can vote on that.
Yeah, I, I would like to amend that ordinance to change the verbiage.
Okay. Do I have a second?
046.
I don't, I don't understand what, what would have been in that that would make people think there's going to be a crosswalk painted.
Well, it- It said, it's, so it says, but here's the language that was in there, an ordinance to enact a no parking zone due to the implementation and, this is what was, installation of a crosswalk at the intersection of Sycamore Street and Market Street. The installation, we didn't want people to think that we're actually going to paint a crosswalk because that's not the, that's not common in the city outside of where it actually needed, needs to be.
Okay.
So it'll say, it'll have all the signage and everything. So you second that? Any questions on that?
So what is it going to say?
Well, it'll be, we're just not painting the lines.
What is the ordinance going to say?
He's going to read it right now.
Okay.
All right. Amended ordinance 20-09-046, an ordinance to enact a no parking, should I say zone or just no parking?
No.
Just read it as- At the intersection of Sycamore Street and North Market Street. Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
I know.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And now, you can read, second reading.
Say that again?
Yep.
All right. Second reading for ordinance 20-09-046, the amendment, an ordinance to enact a no parking at the intersection of Sycamore Street and North Market Street. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yeah.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
I will clarify, uh, whether or not the word zone needs to be in the title before we pass it on third and final.
Well, don't you think it just needs to say no parking, not a no parking?
Well, it, the original said a no parking zone.
Right.
So it needs to either say no parking-
Okay.
Or a no parking zone. It's, it's kind of, when we move, we change that language, I need to ver, I'll clarify with Mr. Hatcher-
Because there's three of them.
So that we know exactly what it says. What should it say?
No parking zones because we're implementing three.
Take out the word a.
Okay. No parking zones. All right. We will have the, I mean, we all know what's happening, we just need to make sure that the verbiage is accurate when it's officially signed and passed on, or it's passed on third and final and officially signed next time. Okay. Uh, any other business? Oh, Dave.
Uh, so are you going to have specified how many B from the intersection?
Yes, there is going to be a, there is an exhibit A that will be tagged with this.
Okay.
So yes, and I, Jay and the law, you know, Jay, they have, they have that. And that will be part of the exhibit.
Okay.
Two weeks from now.
I do have another question for the mayor.
Yes.
We had talked last meeting about getting something put together between the potential charter commissioners and Garrett Hunter. Are we, where are we at on that? Just so they could have some meetings together and know what they're going toward?
I sent information to the 16 people on the ballot and hadn't heard back from Gary.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. Anything else to come before council this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Egler? Oh!
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, Market Street is a boulevard and a lot of people don't know how to, how to drive, uh, when they're turning. I've had a lot of people that have been very rude, you know, when you, you pull up, you're supposed to pull, turn into the lane that you're turning in. And a lot of people, they go cockeyed across it and I've had people almost take off my front end or my back end of my vehicle because they don't know what to do. Um, I know it could possibly be expensive, but it would be nice to have arrows or something to show people how to drive. Because it's like, it's a, it's crazy on that street, they just don't know what they're doing, they turn too soon, but then they're, it, it's just ridiculous. Has anybody ever looked at that?
I, I mean, I, no.
No, I've had to slam my brakes on different times because people just don't know what they're doing.